Welcome to the third hearing of the inquiry into the coronial jurisdiction here in New South Wales. Before we commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land in which parliament sits and where I am today. I'd also like to pay my respects to elders past, present and emerging of the Eora Nation, and extend that respect to any other First Nations persons present. Today's hearing is being conducted virtually. This enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID pandemic without compromising the health and safety of members, witnesses or staff. I would ask for everyone's patience through any technical difficulties that we may encounter during the hearing today. If participants or witnesses lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, they are asked to rejoin the hearing by the same link as provided by the committee secretariat. Today we'll be hearing from a number of, well, we'll be hearing from a family who has lost a loved one in a workplace accident. We will also be hearing from a number of industrial organisations, unions, and we're very thankful to hear the evidence from the mother of Christopher Casanidi, who, as I indicated earlier, tragically lost his life in a work fatality in April 2019. I thank everyone for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments they may make to the media or others after completing their evidence here. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution adopted by the House in 2018. If witnesses are unable to answer a question today and want more time to respond, they can take a question on notice. Written answers to questions taken on notice are to be provided within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being recorded and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. A few notes on the virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruptions and assist our hands side reporters. Can I ask committee members to clearly identify to whom questions are directed? And I ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking. Could everyone mute their microphones when not speaking? And please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. If you start speaking while muted, please start again so that it can be recorded in the transcript. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so we can all hear each other clearly. And to assist hands side, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and avoid making comments when your head is turned. Before moving to our first witness, I just make a couple of observations. One, I believe the Amoria Marsick, the Assistant Secretary of the Transport Workers Union, will no longer be giving evidence this morning. It will be Mitch Wright, the media and political adviser to the union, who'll be speaking on behalf of the union. Secondly, there is a small change in the composition of this committee. Mr Khan is no longer a member of this inquiry, he's been appointed as a magistrate. And we will miss his contribution, but we have Mr Peter Poullos, who replaces him, but who is an apology for today's meeting. So I now welcome our first witness, Mrs Patricia Casanidi. Can you please state your name and swear either an oath or an affirmation from the material that has been emailed to you by the secretariat? Ms Casanidi, we can't hear you, if you can unmute yourself and start again. No, can't hear you yet.
Oh.
I think we can hear you now, Patricia, just speak again.
Yes.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep, perfect. Okay, we seem to have lost you again. The image is frozen and we can't hear you.
I can hear you.
Maybe Patricia-
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you, maybe Patricia turn off the video and just see whether that improves the audio.
I got Patricia through pretty much all of that with only a very tiny break.
Okay, I don't think we got any of her here at the parliament.
Alright, so we're done now?
Yes, I can hear-
Because I can hear everybody.
Good, okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, fantastic. Now, what I was saying, I don't have the oath in front of me, so.
Well, I can get the card and then I'll read it and you can repeat after me. Would you take an oath or an affirmation, Patricia? Patricia, which one, the oath or the affirmation? Patricia, are you still there?
Amy? Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Anyone else can hear me? Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure why it can drop me out, so.
That's okay, we can hear you now. Are you gonna swear an oath?
Oath, yes.
Yep, okay, so repeat after me. I swear that the evidence now-
I swear that the evidence now-
About to be given by me-
About to be given by me-
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Can you please state your full name and the capacity in which you give evidence here today?
My name is Patricia. Did you lose me again?
I'm told that the transcript is recording you and I think the committee members can hear you. It's just me who intermittently loses you.
Right.
That's okay, that's okay.
So I'll continue?
Yep.
No problem. I'll start my statement.
Yep, just to, you'd like to give an opening statement? Please proceed.
Sure. So, good morning. Firstly, I'd like to thank, take this opportunity to thank the committee for allowing me to be witness to the coronial jurisdiction hearing. My name is Patricia Casanidi, I'm Christopher's mum, who unfortunately passed away on the 1st of April 2019 in a tragic and totally unnecessary scaffold collapse. Christopher was crushed and suffocated to death. It would have taken a five-minute complacent decision that was made to speed up the process to get the job done, that took my son for life. That decision was to remove all the tyres that secure the scaffold to the building and overloaded by 19 tonnes of material that caused the scaffold to collapse. These actions are common and usually a major factor of incidents happening on job sites due to time constraints and cost-cutting processes, processes that get the job done. As with Christopher's law, I hope that unrealistic time constraints and quoting costs of jobs are better regulated. I'm grateful to the coroner who called me just before Christopher's funeral to explain how Christopher died and told me that the reason why she called was because... I want to know what it's taken and why it is so hard to information. I would like to express that from personal experience, it would be greatly appreciated if we were contacted more often during the process, as we feel left in the dark and that the death of our loved one is just a statistic. Today will be two years and 10 months after Christopher's death, and I still do not know exactly what happened, and only God knows when I will. I've put in several requests for a coronial inquiry to take place, but keep getting told that because there has been a prosecution, that there will be no need. I totally disagree with this decision, knowing that Christopher's case is one of the biggest investigations taken on by Safe Work New South Wales, with an outcome that did not match the severity of the crime. Therefore, not setting a precedent to other PCBUs for consequences dealt due to unsafe work practices. I also speak on behalf of all other families who have lost their workplace. We all would like to see that when a death occurs at a workplace, a coronial inquest must be taken, and a jury should be appointed to the case. The penalties we have in New South Wales are a slap in the face and no way enough to the sentence we endure. Made even worse, when an enforceable undertaking is given to the accused, only then to be given a discount when penalised after pleading guilty. Where is our discount? My husband, Robert, and I received a life sentence for something we did not do. When the employer admits guilt and there is no trial, there are so many unanswered questions that need to be addressed. Guilty plea. Imagine the question if there were a coronial inquest prior to a prosecution. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, for that opening statement. With the indulgence of the committee, I might ask some initial questions and then throw it open to the committee members more generally. Patricia, in relation to the incident in which your son lost his life, there was a Safe Work prosecution in the district court, that's correct?
Yes.
And that was against the company that controlled the work site?
Yes.
And as you understand it, Safe Work is currently undertaking a prosecution against the scaffolding company, is that correct?
That's correct.
But in relation to the prosecution that has been finalised, that proceeding is essentially by way of a plea? That is, the company pleaded guilty to a category two or lesser charge and essentially the evidence was somewhat contained in the district court, is that your understanding?
Well, I believe once the prosecution was made with the building company, it was then found that more evidence was brought in, which then put the scaffolding company in the light to be prosecuted. And I just find that, you know, this happened just before the two years had gone by, and it literally just probably a couple of weeks beforehand. And I'm not sure why that kind of stuff happens, because all the information is there. You know, it's been going on for a very long time, and then all of a sudden new evidence is brought forward, putting the scaffolding company under, you know, category one offences and category two offences as well, which kind of baffled me totally, knowing that the builder's 100% responsible for anything that happens on site, yet they ended up with a category two.
But in any case, from your understanding, although there has been a prosecution under the Work Health and Safety Act, from your understanding now, what you've learnt about what happened to your son and what is going on more generally in the construction industry, how there are so many common issues, it's your evidence, isn't it, that a coronial inquiry into the manner and cause of your son's death would reveal the systemic issues more clearly and better than the criminal prosecutions?
100%.
Okay.
And even I've been told, and I've made several requests, every meeting with Safe Work, every meeting I've had with the police investigators, and there's been several times where I've actually said I would like a coronial inquest regardless of the outcome, that this is to be done whenever it needs to be done. The last time I put a formal statement in was the 13th of July with the police investigator to make sure that this coronial inquest goes ahead even though a prosecution has been formally given. I just believe that it needs to be done, otherwise it doesn't set a precedent for, as I said in my statement, it doesn't set a precedent for any other PCBUs for consequences regarding unsafe work practices.
And what would you hope would come out of a coronial inquiry that hasn't come out of the Safe Work prosecution?
I still don't know what happened to my son. I still don't know exactly what happened, what caused, I just know that the scaffold was collapsed because of the tyres being removed and being overloaded. But there is more to it, and I want to know, and a lot of other people want to know, and it is important for others to know what happened, what caused not just the tyres and the overweight, because apparently it is something that the scaffolders have done that have put the blame totally to them regarding the actual scaffold collapsing. So it needs to come out, it needs to be put in that coronial request so that everyone knows what happened, so that we can work on those recommendations that a coronial inquest can give, on how to avoid this. Because, you know, when someone dies, it's too late, it's too late. We need to prevent, and this is what my whole work is all about, is to prevent more deaths from happening and more injuries from happening. And this can only be done through coronial inquests and following through with recommendations that are given to government, that need to be also followed through with government, not just be given and left on the table, that need to be actioned.
And is it your understanding that the kinds of things that occurred in relation to what happened to Christopher are reasonably common in the construction industry, so there would be a lot of additional benefit from having a proper analysis?
Yes, very much so. I hear it all the time. I've done many talks on job sites where I've actually been told that some of the scaffolders have rushed off straight after my talk to go and check their scaffolds, because it is a common practice. A lot of unlicensed workers take it upon themselves to remove components from scaffolds when they clearly know they cannot do this. And as much as I keep pushing for things like, you know, anti-tampering devices to be put on scaffolds and nobody can touch these, it's kind of, it has to be done so that people don't touch it. But complacency will always override what we know is safe to do, always. And as a worker, they're there to get the job done as quickly as possible because they are under time constraints and pressures, so they do remove things that they shouldn't to get the job done. I know it's in danger.
Okay, well, thank you, Patricia. Other committee members who would like to take the next line of questioning?
Mr Chair, Catherine Cusack here, I have some questions, if that's okay.
Yep, Ms Cusack, and then if other committees members wish to indicate, maybe send me a text so I can give you the call.
I've sent a message on WhatsApp, Mr Chair.
No, no, floor's yours, Catherine.
We've got WhatsApp.
Okay, good, yep.
Thank you.
Can I first thank the witness for appearing and just express my condolences? It's just beyond our imaginations what you've endured. And I suppose what I'm hearing is that you quite rightly have questions that you want answered to, and the processes that you've been going through, if you know, hope that those processes will deliver those answers and outcomes, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, I mean, I just find that I, all I hear is rumours from other people of what actually happened to my son, but I do want to know exactly what happened.
And you'll accept, sorry.
There is, the investigations made on my son's case is so large, it's one of the largest that Safe Work has taken on. They have 110 files of investigations regarding the case, yet I'm only getting snippets of it. So the whole thing needs to be aired out, and people need to know what happened so that it does not happen again.
And it's your perception that a coronial hearing will give you that public airing of the issues, which will alert people and ensure changes can be made?
Yes, because unless people know what exactly happened, how can changes be made?
Can I ask you, just because I'm not familiar with the construction industry, why would somebody remove the tyres from scaffolding? What is the purpose of that?
So workers such as finishing, finishing workers like bricklayers, painters, renderers, they use scaffolds to be able to finish the product. So if, once the building has gone up, then you'll have a bricklayer to finish off any balconies, you'll have renderers that need to finish rendering on the surface of the building, or painters, and then still need a scaffold to get up there on the outside of the building. But tyres are put onto the building to secure the scaffold to it, but they are in the way. So instead of calling the scaffolding, the scaffolding company, to bring in a professional to move the tyres to a different place so that they're not in the way anymore, but still secured to the building, and then they continue work. This takes time, this takes time, money to do. So a lot of people avoid that process and they do it themselves. They remove tyres that are very essential, that must remain in place, so that they continue to do the work, but then they can't put them back again because they've just finished that product, the face of the building where that tyre was tied on to.
Thank you so much for explaining that.
No problem.
Can I ask your experience of the investigation? Because I assume that there's been a police and a Safe Work kind of investigation. How have you found that? Has that been clear cut and have they worked together well? Or have you found this confusing and difficult to, about where things are up to?
Extremely confusing, extremely confusing. At first, the police was the one that stepped in and then Safe Work, apparently once Safe Work takes over, they are the jurisdiction, they are the ones that finish everything and do all the investigations. What baffled me right from the beginning was that the police investigator that was trying to help with the investigation kept on being pushed aside, to saying, well, we're taking over, Safe Work has now taken over, so we deal with it. Every time the police investigator went to do an interview with someone that was on the job site, they were, she was told that they couldn't, they didn't need to answer her because Safe Work has already been told. And unless, you know, they had no obligations to give evidence to the police officer because Safe Work had already been told. I believe being two government, like entities here, they should be working together and helping each other out to investigate the issue properly.
Thank you, ma'am. One last question, Mr Chair, and this is it from me.
Yep.
Is there a liaison person for you with Safe Work?
Yes, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Mr Shubridge then, Ms Sharp, Mr Shubridge.
Oh, thanks, Ms Casanidi, and again, you know, we have our collective gratitude for you coming and the work you've done since the tragic, since the tragic death. And I think it's collective gratitude that we have for the work you've continued to do. Could I ask you about the, obviously, has it been, has it been explained to you the difference between a criminal hearing and the way a defendant interacts with a criminal hearing and a coronial hearing? The difference between, you know, an inquisitorial proceeding, which is a coronial hearing, and the traditional criminal law defensive proceeding?
Sort of, I mean, it's still very confusing to me. I know that obviously when you do the criminal side of things, the investigations are based on the interviews and getting the information. Coronial is putting it all together and finding out what actually happened and why, and putting in obviously recommendations so it doesn't happen again. That's how I understand a coronial inquest to be.
I think you've got a pretty good handle on it. Patricia, I think you really have. And that's what you want in your case, isn't it? You want the coroner to be using those powers to get to the truth of what on earth happened.
100%, and I could never understand right from the beginning why a coronial inquest is done after a prosecution. When there is a death involved, it's not acceptable. The coronial inquest should be done before a prosecution, in front of a jury, or in front of people that decide what actually happened, to be able to give the right penalty. I mean, our penalties and the consequences in our New South Wales law really are very low, they're not, there's no consequences and the penalties are very low.
So, yep, how long did all those criminal law proceedings take in the work health sector?
It's still going.
Yep, have you been, have you been given a deadline, a likely hearing date?
No, no, I still don't know what's happening. I know that the builder's been prosecuted and he's out of the picture now. Now it's the scaffolding company that is going, but they keep adjourning, so.
What do you mean, out of the picture for the builder?
The builder, well, the builder's already been prosecuted, so that's it, that's it for them.
Done.
And they're done.
And now it's the scaffolder, and do you know if the builder has entered a plea of guilty or not?
No, they keep adjourning. So their next court hearing is on the 14th of February. My lawyers have sent a letter to them to say, will you be entering a plea? But we have had no answer.
And has anybody, is, in terms of, once those, once those conclude, the scope for a coronial hearing after those have concluded, what's been, if any, discussions about that?
I keep getting told that because it was a prosecution, that there will be no need. And I'm totally against that. I do believe that we need one. Being such a big case and being one of the biggest cases Safe Work has taken on, a public coronial inquest must be taken place because a lot of people still are asking questions to what happened.
And particularly if there's a plea of guilty, only a tiny fraction of the evidence will actually find itself out.
100%, we need to know everything, it doesn't, I can't bring my son back, okay? There's nothing I can do to bring my son back. My work is all behind making sure that this does not happen again. Unfortunately, I'm on job sites all the time and I see things that, that people are still taking on unsafe work practices, even though there is a new law that was brought in by the minister, Kevin Anderson, that even if you do, go ahead with unsafe work practices, you can still get prosecuted even if you don't die or get injured. But people do not take that into account, they just do it because this is the culture of the industry. They will still take on unsafe work practices and put themselves in danger.
In terms of your experience about the plea of guilty by the builder and how that court process played out, can you tell me what happened in that plea of guilty?
So at first, when we were talking with Safe Work New South Wales, we thought, we were always under the impression that the whole case would be under a category one prosecution. We weren't told until after they were actually prosecuted that they were downgraded to a category two, which sort of like floored my husband and I, because I thought, how on earth can such a big case now become a category two instead of a category one, when everything was very clear cut of why the scaffold came down? The reason being is obviously with a category one, as it was with when Christopher died, it had to be proven without reasonable doubt of who actually took the tyres off for a prosecution to become a category one. They only pleaded guilty to overloading the scaffold, and that is it.
And then the actual, on the day that the plea, that the plea was accepted, was there a sentencing hearing? Do you remember the sentencing?
It was after a few days, yep.
And how long was, how long was the sentencing hearing?
Not long at all.
Hours?
Oh, no, the sentencing, I think, was over within probably about an hour.
So all of, all of that investigation, all of the statements, all of that, hopefully, complex understanding of what happened in the lead up to your son's death, was all dealt within a court process largely that was over and done?
It was deflated.
Yep.
Totally deflated. And I've always said to Safe Work New South Wales, we, we need to work together to make sure that, we set a precedent for unsafe work practices. Because at the moment, and I can tell you now with people speaking to me, there is no precedent. There is, no one is scared of what's going to happen, because from such a big case, the prosecution came to pretty much a slap on the wrist, a $900,000 fine, which was paid by the insurance company, and that's it. And then a court order. And that is it, that came out of it. A lot of people, you know, $900,000 to a- A lot of people, you know, $900,000 to a massive builder that builds $220 million, um, you know, projects, uh, $900,000 is peanuts. Yet I'm the one with a life sentence.
Patricia, I fully understand why you think that that is nowhere near good enough and why you're pressing for a coroner in your case. So thank you for coming today.
No problem. I mean, as I said before, I, I can't see justice going in, in any direction here. And this is why the coronial inquest for me is the most important thing. Because I can't change what happened. I can only change what the future's, um, holding.
Ms. Sharp.
Uh, thank you. And look, thank you very much for coming along today. Um, the loss of your son is horrendous for any person to contemplate and, um, the work that you're doing is so important. Look, my colleagues actually have asked most of the questions that I was, um, going to ask. They very ably covered them, so I won't ask you again. But I did want to, I did have one question, which was really just about your comment. I mean, you obviously, through the work that you're doing, are going on to a lot of work sites. And as you said, you're observing a lot of unsafe practices. I mean, they're, they're just, you know, government generally, I think there's a lack of enforcement in a lot of those areas. I mean, is that the sort of, is that sort of something else that you think needs to be considered? I mean, if, if you're seeing all these unsafe practices, we know that the union draws a lot of attention to these kind of practices, but there's supposed to be, what's your experience of, of seeing how that's working?
Um, I believe it's the consequences that we do not have. We don't have enough consequences in place within New South Wales for these unsafe work practices to stop. Um, and with Christopher's case, we didn't put that precedent in place. We actually made it worse by making people think, well, you know, this is the biggest case we've had. And look at where they're, they're at. There, it's only $900,000 fine. We can afford it, it's fine, let's keep going. Um, it needs to be tougher. We need to be matching and, and looking at other states of where they're at, uh, where a lot of PCBUs are on notice. And they know that there is, the prosecution is much, much heavier than it is in New South Wales. So they hold the reins. They hold the reins within the, within their companies to say, hey, don't do that because I end up in jail. And we need that in New South Wales. We need tougher consequences and penalties for PCBUs to actually take note that unsafe work practices will not be tolerated. And unless those consequences come in place, I can speak until I'm blue in the face. People won't take it seriously.
You're really talking about the deterrent. That's right, an industrial manslaughter, which we do have a bill before the House. So hopefully, we'll get to the point later this year. Thank you very much for coming in today. I know that it must be quite painful to constantly be talking about this, but your work is so important. Um, and I really thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you for having me. And, you know, for me, it's, it is important to, to work on this future that we hold for, you know, my, my youngest son has just entered the, um, construction industry and my heart is in my throat. Um, but, you know, we need to, we need to take care of every Australian because no Australian should ever go to work and die.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you.
Yeah.
Does any, do any, any other committee members have further questions for this witness? No? All right, well, um, Patricia, on behalf of the committee, we thank you for taking uh, your valuable time to give us, uh, the benefit of your insights, given your tragic experiences. I know you're not a stranger to giving, uh, evidence to parliamentary inquiries like this, but we, we thank you for your time. And again, uh, we, we stand in awe of your committee, your ongoing commitment to, you know, really raise the standards of safety and behaviour in the construction industry against all of the odds. Uh, and of course, you have our continuing condolences for the loss for which there can be no reparation. Um, all right, well, we, our next witness isn't until 11 o'clock, so we might take a short adjournment until that time. Um, and, uh, the witness is excused. Thank you.
Thank you so much and thank you for all your time and in putting this together.
A pleasure.
No problem.
We now welcome our next witness, Ms Laura Tous, the legal officer from the New South Wales Nurses and Midwives Association, to speak to the union's submission to this inquiry. Before the witness takes an oath or an affirmation, I should just make a short declaration. My daughter is a nurse and is a member of this association and until recently was an employee of the union. We'll now proceed to Ms Tous. Ms Tous, would you like to swear an oath or an affirmation?
An affirmation, thank you.
Do you have the words in front of you?
I do.
Please proceed.
I solemnly and sincerely declare and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And can you please give your full name and the capacity in which you give evidence here today?
My full name is Laura Jane Tous and I'm a legal officer from the New South Wales Nurses and Midwives Association.
Thank you. Now, the association has made a submission to the inquiry, submission number 51. Do you wish to give a brief opening statement to speak to that?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair.
Please.
I thank the Select Committee for the invitation to speak at this inquiry. And firstly, I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which I am working, the Gadigal and Wurundjeri people of the Ura Nation, and pay my respects to elders past, present, and emerging. I'm speaking to you on behalf of the New South Wales Nurses and Midwives Association, the peak professional industrial organisation for nurses and midwives. The primary connection between the work of the association and the coroner's court is through legal representation provided directly to members. As noted in our submission, nurses and midwives may be asked to provide statements and will be subpoenaed by the coroner to give evidence in relation to reportable deaths that occur in connection with their work. These deaths are often the unexpected deaths of patients in a clinical setting. These deaths also commonly occur in the context of someone being detained in declared mental health facilities and correctional facilities. Our submission selectively addressed parts of the terms of reference that are relevant to our connection with the court. And in summary, the recommendations made in our submission focus on the adequacy of the resourcing of agencies who assist the coroner's court, the adequacy of the training of New South Wales police in relation to coronial matters, the need for transcripts to be provided at no cost to parties, and the need for provision of access to specialised resources, including counselling for witnesses, as well as the need for multi-agency approaches to investigations in industrial deaths. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee members, who wishes to commence questioning of the witness? Anybody have any particular questions? If not, I might have. You do?
Just a second.
David, please start.
Thanks so much for the submission today. Could I ask you, in terms of the role of the union in representing your members during coronial investigations, what's the union's role and what's the experience of that process in the coronial system?
So, our role is to provide legal representation to members of the association. So where there is a request for them to either provide a statement or to give evidence in a coronial matter, they can contact us directly and seek representation by one of the employed legal officers such as myself. And in that process, the process that you asked about involves us generally, as a first step, seeking access to medical records for the deceased in response to that request and then taking instructions from our members and providing a statement as requested. If the matter then proceeds to a hearing, then we would represent our members directly in those hearings.
And in cases where there's been a death and there were concerns about the adequacy of medical care, the health system itself does a kind of lessons learned investigation of that. Can you talk us through that?
My experience is that usually a local health district will conduct a root cause analysis investigation, which obviously, the outcome of which is not admissible in coronial proceedings. But that is usually informative in terms of how an LHD might reflect on the care provided, be it medical, nursing, medico free, wherever those sort of issues are identified. That may inform evidence that's given later on if a matter proceeds to hearing or by way of a statement provided to the coroner in circumstances where the coroner may decide not to proceed to a hearing.
Now, in other states and territories, that root cause analysis is routinely tended in coronial proceedings and is a great starting point for the coroners in other jurisdictions to work out what actually happened and then to do a deeper dive. Does your union have any view about the admissibility of the root cause analysis in coronial proceedings in New South Wales?
Our view, I imagine, would be that it's actually an important protection for our members that the root cause analysis isn't admissible. And that's because the way in which information that informs the root cause analysis is collected, people don't have access to legal representation prior. They usually don't have a support person. Lots of questions are asked at the moment. They're free to give that information that might help identify those really severe systemic issues without any concern that that information might be used against them later on in either a coronial or a disciplinary process.
But, I mean, of course, this would come with unambiguous protections that it could not be used against anybody in any civil or criminal proceedings, but simply be made available to the coroner for the coronial proceedings. And given it's routinely provided in other jurisdictions, would that allay your concerns if there were those clear protections about it being inadmissible in any civil or criminal proceedings?
No, it wouldn't. I think that protection is so important because coroners are in a position where they can make adverse comments in relation to nurses and midwives. And also, there are ongoing debates about whether or not disciplinary is included in the scope of what is civil. And for our members, what we're generally trying to protect them against is any adverse finding or criticism from the coroner and any potential referral to the Healthcare Complaints Commission as a result of a coronial finding.
Right. The protection could expressly include disciplinary and/or professional bodies, professional discipline as well. But I do understand your position and I understand why you have it. Could I ask you about the delays? How are you finding the delays and what impact does that have on your members?
Delays are really, I guess, tricky sort of issue because every case is different. There are some, and every case will have different reasons that there might be delays. And also, what is a delay is entirely dependent on context and how a matter might be reported to the coroner. And we have delays sometimes early on because of an inability to get those medical records and get statements provided in a timely manner. That might impact, I guess, a timeframe to some extent. But usually, they're not going to be heard. These matters aren't going to be heard until three to five years after a death. There are delays that we see in terms of how matters are prepared by those assisting the coroner. But again, that's not, from our point of view, is probably a resourcing issue in terms of how those, I guess, the solicitors employed by those agencies, the capacity that they have to collect and gather all of the information, particularly quite late on in the piece, in the lead up to a hearing, after it's been determined that a hearing will go ahead.
Yeah, so just my final question is, what are you finding the usual timeframe for a defended matter? A matter which goes to a public hearing is probably the better way of describing it. From time of death to a matter that goes to a public hearing, what's the kind of timeframe you would say to your members to expect?
I would say three to five years.
Do you think that's appropriate?
It's very difficult to say. It depends on what, I mean, it's a little bit like, I guess, an unfolding puzzle. You don't have all the pieces. And sometimes, very early on, those issues won't be identified until there is a request for one statement, which leads to a request for another statement, and then again, a third statement. It's really difficult to say that there's, I guess, an amount of time that something should happen in. And recently, I was involved in a matter that was actually, it actually went to hearing really early. Like comparatively, really, less than two years after the death, the inquest was due to start. And on one hand, you go, great, this is fantastic, things are happening quickly. However, the member that I represented wasn't asked to provide a statement until a month before the inquest, when they were also subpoenaed to give evidence and notified as a person of sufficient interest. Now, this is someone who provided a significant amount of care to the deceased prior to their death over a period of two days. And you could sort of go, okay, this is good, the matter's been set down within a two-year period. But we've got all of this evidence kind of being collected really close to the hearing, which affects how long the hearing goes on for. It was set down for two weeks and I think we ended up having nearly four weeks of hearing all up. So it's one thing to sort of say, oh, it's delays. But on the other hand, it's also preparation. And you want to make sure you have good opportunity to prepare the matter so that you're not having part-hurt matters that drag on and on and on.
But surely, that's a case in point for better resourcing at the beginning to gather the evidence when it's fresh in someone's mind, not two years after the incident. I mean, it's a case in point for more resourcing, isn't it?
Yes.
Thanks, Mrs.
Ms Sharp, you had some questions?
Mr Shubridge asked my questions about the root cause analysis. Thank you for that and thanks for coming in today. Two things that I wanted to touch on. The first was, well, three actually. You've talked about the lack of cooperation from police in getting transcripts. Could you just take us through the process and what the difficulties are?
So you should just clarify, I've talked about the lack of cooperation from police in getting medical records and then a separate issue being transcripts.
Yes, right, yes, that's actually what I meant. The medical records issue, I'm going to ask you about the transcripts in a tick too.
Sure. So the problem we have is often when there is a request to provide a statement, that request will usually come through the local health district. A member of ours will get an email or something saying, you've got to provide a statement to the police in this matter. There are times when police will come down to a hospital. They will take the nurses or midwives up to the police station and take a statement without actually informing them of their rights not to provide a statement or their right to access the medical records in order to refresh their memory before making those statements. What is happening, what we're experiencing really frequently is circumstances where we get in touch with the officer in charge and we say, look, we've received instructions from these nurses. We'd like to assist them to provide statements to the coroner. We need to get a copy of the medical records. And they say, oh, no, you can't have those. And we said, well...
Just to be clear, is there, I mean, I'm assuming that's, so you must get the medical records sometimes. So that's not the rule, it's not part of the process. It's sort of a discretionary issue with the police?
That's right. It's that the police will say, they might say, oh, you'll need to write to the court. They might say, you need to go to the LHD. They might say, oh, ask the solicitors for the LHD. So there's no clear process which really empowers them to share that information early on in order to facilitate the quick provision of statements. And that's really what we need.
It sounds to me that that's really, and your submission touches on this, it really goes to just sort of lack of understanding from police in relation to the process? Or is it sort of a lack of awareness of the policy? I suppose what I'm asking is, are there reasons why the police would refuse that? Or is it more just that they're just not across their ability to provide that to you?
Absolutely. I think it's a lack of training. I don't, you know, it's nothing, you know, there's no bad blood between us and the police. It's just a lack of training and understanding, which often leads to these unnecessary conflicts when we're all just on the same page trying to get this matter moving along. Often, our members are very willing to provide statements, they just want to get it done and dusted. We have to say to them, look, it's not in your best interest where you've made entries in this person's medical record to then give a statement just off the back of your memory because it's not going to be accurate. Or it could be, you know, could give evidence in conflict with your own medical records. Obviously, not in their best interest.
And as we said, it could be quite a long time between when that happens and when you're asked to remember something with the thousands of patients that you deal with on any given week.
That's right. And sometimes people who've been involved in a sort of traumatic death, they'll say, yes, I've got a pretty good memory of that day because everything's just locked into place. But if it's an ordinary shift, I've got one at the moment, the inquest is next month and the member provided care over a period of four hours five years ago. And there's no way people can recall when nothing on that shift happened. It was just a routine, ordinary shift. So it's a really, yeah, it's really difficult and it's only with the provision of those medical records. Now, thankfully, that matter is further down the track. So we just ask the agency assisting the coroner and they send it to a straightaway. There's never any issue with that. It's just with, I think, police having, it seems to be, from our perspective, a kind of lack of protocol, lack of training, lack of support. You know, I regularly have conversations with police officers where they say, I'm the officer in charge, but I've never done an inquest before. And it's just allocated to the person who takes the call and turns up. And then all of a sudden, they have this enormous amount of work to take on in circumstances where they may not have any training or experience.
Thank you. You've talked about the cost of transcripts. How much does it cost to get a transcript?
So as a recent example, for a five-day hearing, I think it was about $2,800, thereabouts. And this is for a matter where we've got one member. It was a part-hurt hearing, we had a further three days, which is about $2,500 for those three days. So it can be very costly for a not-for-profit organisation like ours.
Yeah, so the union picks up the cost for that on behalf of the member, is that what you do?
Well, it's not a mandatory, I guess, requirement that we pay for it. We need to make an assessment as to whether or not we need to get access to that available transcript. The difficulty we might have is that there might be circumstances where we have to make a decision which is, look, it's actually not worth it, you know, to spend that money on the transcript because there aren't significant issues that are going to kind of tip depending on what's in the transcript. But the coroner has access to the transcript, council assisting has access to the transcript, other parties may have access, and we may have to make a submission in the absence of access because of those prohibitive costs.
That's a pretty important issue. I've got one more question, which just is that, and it really goes to, I mean, the root cause analysis is very, you know, something very familiar in health. You know, it's an important part of any time a critical incident occurs. And then obviously, there's the coronial inquest where, you know, a lot of times there's recommendations made around system changes that occur. Are you able to provide, I suppose, the experience of members when these recommendations have been made by the coroner, how they're actually considered and implemented by the department and the local health districts? Do you have a sense of, you know, if there's been a case, there's recommendations made, you know, do you find that, what changes as a result of that? Or do you have sort of practical experience of that?
Usually, the changes that occur, that are shared with us, are those that occur kind of before the recommendations occur, from one of those lessons learnt type statements. Following the implementation of recommendations, there isn't really a good process for transparency in how those may or may not be implemented and the reasons why or why not. I do recall a few years ago, there was a spreadsheet, I believe, created maybe by the Office of the General Counsel, but I could be mistaken on that, which sort of sought to track the recommendations and the response. But that's the only thing that I've ever sort of observed, which aim to kind of, yeah, put those two things together.
The issue of monitoring the recommendations that coroners make has been raised quite a lot through the inquiry. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Ms Sharp. Mr Roberts or Ms Cusack, do you have any questions?
I do, Mr Chair.
Okay, Catherine, and then I think Rod has some too. Catherine, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just pursuing Mr Shubridge's questions in relation to the timeliness of investigations, two years to be fast is very wearing on families and other stakeholders around it. But I wondered also, isn't it very wearing on the worker who has this hanging over their head? And the one that you referred to now, who's been waiting five years for this matter to be resolved? That must be a nightmare, surely.
Oh, absolutely. And what's really difficult is when people provide statements and they don't know whether they're going to be called to give evidence, often for a long time. The matter that you referenced about the five years, this is someone who had no idea they were involved, in fact, until two months before the hearing, which was, I was aiming to feed into what we were talking about in terms of the collection of statements, kind of in a timely manner, or from the inter-agency perspective, in terms of the agencies assisting the coroner, gathering evidence kind of very close to the date of the hearing, making things difficult and kind of that lack of resourcing contributing to delays. But for those members of ours who are providing statements quite early on or even within the first one or two years, yes, they can often have to wait several years before knowing, well, am I going to be involved, am I not? And that is a very difficult thing for them to have to experience professionally and personally.
So what should happen in terms of the workers during this period while it's all dragging on? I mean, I live on the North Coast where we've had some really terrible incidents. We've had the death of a mental health patient at Liston Bay Hospital. We've had deaths in nursing homes. But then there are other deaths that don't appear to have such big negligence or, I mean, when does a worker get stepped aside in the interests of public health outcomes? How should those matters be handled?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand the last part of your question.
Well, in terms of whether you should allow somebody to continue to work in a role when there is reason to believe that something nefarious has occurred, but the investigations are ongoing and likely to take two, three, four, five years, at what tipping point do you suspend the worker until the matter is resolved?
So there are multiple processes which occur. A coronial investigation is very rarely focused on one individual person who may not have done something, if you like. When there is a reportable death, it's also categorised as what they call a SAC1 severity incident within a local health district and other private facilities would have a different sort of coding system whereby a serious adverse event is reported. Those processes that kickstarts, you know, say, a root cause analysis, but it also always involves some sort of internal review to work out, are there any issues that the LHD needs to sort of look closely at in terms of a risk assessment for those staff who are involved? And if there are issues that they pick up in that early assessment, then those staff would be managed in accordance with the LHD policies, which may also include a referral to the Healthcare Complaints Commission to consider whether or not the conduct of that particular staff member warrants, you know, investigation and whether or not any immediate action needs to be taken by the relevant health professional counsel in relation to that person's registration. But that is a really distinct process from the coronial process. And those things will often occur concurrently for some of our members where it maybe has been identified that there are professional issues.
See, I do understand the root cause analysis and its importance in trying at an early stage to actually just get to the truth of what occurred. The baby's dying because of the wrong gas being attached. I mean, obviously, there's a whole legal process that unfolds from that, but people need to actually understand what occurred. But it does seem to me that the coronial process is very much about getting to the truth of the matter as well. But then you have a separate tier of legal actions and discussing criminality and doing prosecutions and all of that. And it almost seems like the truth process and the justice process are quite separated. And the justice process is really delaying everything to almost everybody's detriment.
I don't know that I would agree with the premise of the Crown Court being characterised as a justice process. My view has always been that it's about identifying systems improvement and trying to avoid preventable deaths. And so by being able to analyse, you know, with a lot of parties involved and experts, you know, sort of the manner and cause of death or, you know, the days, weeks, or months leading up to a person's death, they're able to identify those really systemic issues which are contributing factors to a person's death and to avoid that from ever happening again, particularly in those circumstances or similar, that we should be, that people should be learning from that experience and things should change as a result.
Should we have a benchmark in terms of the time period? Should there be a benchmark for resolving these issues? And can you suggest any specific ways in which it could be, those benchmarks could be achieved more easily?
As I mentioned before, I think, you know, having a kind of a set timeframe can be problematic in some circumstances because you can sort of... Because you can sort of be in a situation where you're trying to gather evidence, you know, kind of in a, in a very rushed and hurried matter before, say, a hearing is put on. But also because sometimes hearings can be avoided. And that is actually through the collection of more evidence in the lead up to a matter. I've been involved in a matter that was, you know, it was set down for hearing, statements were collected over, you know, a period, a number of years. And right before the hearing, they started collecting some additional statements. And it actually became clear that the issues that the coroner was trying to determine by way of hearing actually didn't need a hearing to determine because they had sufficient information on the statements. That avoids a really stressful and expensive process because they've gathered the information. There can be benefits, you know, in, in taking time to gather that information. And, and that is not to take away from the, you know, the difficulty that is experienced by everyone involved in a, in a process that runs in a really long time. I think that having, rather than having, you know, a benchmark of saying, oh, this matter has to be heard, you know, within five years, you're far better off investing resources in the collection of information early on to actually identify systemic issues. You know, with respect, I don't think police officers, particularly those who are, you know, not trained or quite inexperienced, trying to work out who they need to get statements from in a, in a complicated, you know, death in a health setting. It's probably not the best way to, you know, to sort of minimise the time between death and inquest. Because there's, I think there's a lot of time that's probably wasted in that process where they're trying to work out, well, what's going on here? What's happened? They don't have any, necessarily any medical or nursing knowledge and they're trying to put together, well, who do I need to get statements from and what do we need to do? And, and they've got a time, a deadline to get something to the coroner. But, you know, there may then be delays before a coroner can review that material as well. So if you want to identify issues early on, I think it's really a matter of changing how that process works from, from the get go.
Mr Roberts, I'm just conscious of the time. Did you have questions, Mr Roberts?
I did have one, Chair. Thanks, if you don't mind. Thank you, Ms Tuss, for giving evidence this morning. I just, and I'm also mindful of the time. I'll just take you to page eight of your submission. Might make it easier for you. Recommendation five. You talk in the submission there about the unfortunate three deaths of nurses in New South Wales that were, occurred whilst on duty and, and the conflict between safe work and the police. Just wondering if you could talk to us a bit more about that and, and fill it in in particular. And I don't want you to go into depth about these three deaths, but are there work-related incidents of nurses, were there?
Yes. So all three deaths were deaths that occurred whilst on duty. I should say that the information contained in that part of the submission obtained from a colleague of mine who provided me with their anecdotal experience about what occurred in, in relation to those two most recent deaths, whereby safe work came and did an inspection and then declined to do an investigation. And, and part of the reason for that was that it was going to be investigated by the coroner as though the coroner is somehow a substitute for a safe work investigation. And, and that's why the recommendation is that, that there needs to be a, a multi-agency approach in terms of how investigations in industrial deaths occur, that there shouldn't be, I guess, an assumption that the coroner is going to do the job of safe work.
Fine. Thank you very much.
Just to follow on from that, in relation to those two deaths in 2019 and 2020, whereabouts did those two incidents take place?
My understanding, one was in a client's home during a home visit and the second was in a mental health unit at a metropolitan hospital, public hospital.
That would be Penrith?
No.
No, not Penrith.
Best of my knowledge, it was Liverpool.
Okay. All right. Ms Cusack, did I cut you off? Did you have one last question?
I was just one last question about an investigation going over maybe a five year period. There must be multiple changes of personnel managing the case, just in terms of wasted time. You must have numerous police handing over or not handing over different skill sets and different approaches to the case. For that, I, I just wondered if you could comment about multiple different personnel managing over a five year period and the delays that must embed into the process.
Absolutely. That does occur. It might go from one police officer to another. But also once the matter is referred to, as say, the Crown Solicitor's Office or the Office of the General Counsel, those matters may change hands internally. Particularly the Crown Solicitor's Office, I understand, has a sort of a system whereby solicitors will rotate through different units. So you could have someone who's looking after a matter, you know, in the, I think the most recent one that I had was someone who'd been looking after a matter for, you know, a year, kind of in the lead up to a hearing, and then two months before the hearing, we get a notification, well, it's got a new solicitor. And I, the amount of work that must go into, you know, I guess, kind of getting across a matter would be enormous. I can't comment specifically on how that may or may not contribute to delays. I think we could sort of assume that there are some delays, but we don't have, you know, kind of anything concrete to say, yes, this causes a delay.
But your point is that all of the other agencies that work around the coronial system also need to be properly resourced, whether it's the Crown Solicitor, whether it's LHDs in the health system, whatever it is they need to make, you need, the government needs to make sure they can also do their job to facilitate the coronial.
Absolutely. What I'm referring to with those agencies are the Crown Solicitor's Office, the Office of the General Counsel, which I think is now Department of Communities and Justice, and the police advocates as well, who work within the coroner's court. Those are the three sort of, I guess, agencies, if you like, that work as council assisting the coroner. And, and they're the ones who really, once a matter goes to hearing, they're the ones that are kind of dictating how, you know, I guess, how a matter is progressing, you know, what, they're providing advice to the coroner, they're having those discussions with the coroner. And I think that if people are sort of obviously moved around, that that is going to impact how a matter progresses. But naturally, obviously, staff will move around everywhere and we have to kind of acknowledge and accept that and, and make sure that that is allowed for.
Any last questions? If not, Ms Tuss, thank you very much for giving evidence and providing.
I just had one question.
Yes, David. Quickly.
Mrs, a report that's delivered five years after the event has happened, after a root cause analysis has been done and whatever other changes have been made, a report that's delivered five years after the event is going to have pretty minimal utility, won't it, in most cases?
I don't know that I would agree with that statement because I think that all coroner's findings have utility. And like I said, sometimes the, the passage of time allows, you know, the gathering of a lot more in-depth evidence. It, it is a long time. It's a really long time and it is incredibly stressful and difficult for those involved. I, I don't want to, you know, kind of ignore that fact. But also in that time, if, say, a local health district has implemented changes, they're often able to demonstrate those changes, you know, through those lessons learned statements before the coroner, which may negate the need in some circumstances for the coroner to make recommendations. And I think what we all want actually is that systems improvement to happen early on. Now, that might happen through the recommendations of the coroner, or it might happen because the LHD are able to clearly, you know, identify those, you know, systemic issues and act on them and change things for the better.
Well, I'd just say this, five years ago, a bloke called Baird was the Premier of New South Wales and few, if any, people can remember. And if you're investigating events that happened when Mike Baird was Premier, I've got to say that the practical utility for the recommendations, I think, is much diminished.
Well, we can, we, we, well, we can debate that. I don't think that's a question that the witness can answer sensibly.
Well, in terms of the implementation.
I understand.
Seeing that meant it.
In any case, I know we're, we're out of time. I think that's beyond the witness's scope. But I thank the witness for coming to give evidence today and the committee will resume at 12 o'clock.
It's 12:01, so we'll resume the hearing. We now welcome our next witnesses from the Rail, Tram and Bus Union and from the Transport Workers Union. Now, could each witness please state their name, their position, title and swear either an oath or an affirmation from the information provided? We'll start with you, Mr. Classons.
So, Alex Classons on the State Secretary of the Rail, Tram and Bus Union and I take the oath.
Please proceed.
Have we got the document? Sorry.
No, it's okay. If you don't have the document, I've got it here.
We haven't got it here, sorry.
No, it's okay. So, repeat after me. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me.
I swear that the evidence about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Ms. Blet?
Helen Blet, branch organiser with the RTBU and I'll take an affirmation, please.
Okay. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare.
I solemnly, truly declare.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Mitch Wright, the medium of political advice for the Transport Workers Union and I'll take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. I thank both organisations for the submissions they have made to this inquiry. The Australian Rail, Tram and Bus Industry Union New South Wales branch is submission number 55 and the Transport Workers Union of New South Wales submission is number 53. Would either union like to give a brief opening statement in support of their submission, starting perhaps with the RTBU?
Yes, we'd like to make a brief statement. We thank the Select Committee for the opportunity to address this vital part of the jurisdiction. Our submission will contain four recommendations, which are briefly the requirement for suppression of names of our members that have to appear in front of the coroner, the streamlining of reports, the coronal investigators understanding on the complexities that involve the rail regulations, rules and other issues, and the issuing of one drug and alcohol test after an incident rather than multiple. We would really appreciate it. Our submission is based on the wording from our members under some consultation and these are their stories and I'd like to put on the record that we appreciate their assistance and generosity in sharing some traumatising events in their life. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yeah, I'll also make a brief opening statement. Thanks. Again, thank the committee for the invitation to participate today and also acknowledge Darren People, the traditional land that I'm joining this hearing from, and their elders, past, present and emerging. And I also just extend apologies to our State Secretary who was unable to attend. The TWU represents thousands of workers in one of our state and nation's most deadly industries, the road transport. This industry is consistently overrepresented among worker fatalities and while there's a number of factors contributing to the high fatality rates in the industry, the critical factor across all of them is the link between pain conditions for drivers and safety outcomes. We have retailers, supermarkets, oil companies and others at the top of transport supply chains continuing to apply increasing cost pressure throughout their supply chains. We're going to continue to see drivers and transport operators pressured into cutting corners on safety and that will be borne out in the road trial. While this current inquiry is incredibly important in ensuring we have a system that's fair and provides justice for workers and their families who were killed in the workplace, including the dozens of transport workers who die in their workplace, we need to be doing so much more to reduce worker fatalities in the road transport industry in the first place. That being said, the submission that we've provided to this inquiry focuses on the ambiguous overlap between the coronial and WHS jurisdictions in relation to workplace fatalities, which in our view can lead to delays and confusion for families of victims of workplace fatalities at what is obviously incredibly difficult and distressing time for them. So again, thank the committee for the opportunity and look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Committee members, over to you. I'll just check the WhatsApp. Who would like to commence questioning?
I have a question to Mr. Wright on the TWU submission. Thank you both. Thank to all the witnesses for your assistance and your submissions. So right, you talk about the, your submission talks about the prosecutorial guidelines for safe work and the arrangement between safe work and the New South Wales Police to effectively decide at the commencement of an investigation whether or not safe work or police will take the lead in an investigation involving a workplace death and therefore whether or not a potential manslaughter charges under the Crimes Act will be the subject of the investigation or potentially a prosecution under the WHS Act. Can you, first of all, describe that to us as best you know it, that process? And then tell me what you think about that decision being made so early.
Yeah, so I suppose the underlying principle here would be that just there's not enough of a view from any of the regulators of road transport deaths being viewed as workplace deaths. More often than not, the path that is followed when either a transport worker dies in their workplace, be it on the, being on the roads or they're involved in an incident in which someone else is killed, more often than not, it's, police are called, you know, they set up a crime scene, they notify the coroner, coroner doesn't, more often than not, doesn't hold an inquest because it's a, you know, stock standard road fatality, so to speak. And then that's that. It's only the really most sort of egregious examples of PCBUs not fulfilling their duties that we see safe work get involved. And our position as a union is just, it's extraordinary that in the industry that is consistently either the most or second most deadly, the Work Health and Safety Regulator plays such a passive role, more often than not.
Is it your experience that there is at least some engagement between police and safe work at the commencement, the way those guidelines envisage?
I don't have that answer to hand. I could probably take it on notice and see if we have any information from previous examples, but all we do know is that safe work prosecutions for fatalities that occur on the road are extremely rare. In the road transport industry, it tends to be more around loading issues where, you know, in the process of loading a truck, someone is crushed and killed. Those safe work are a bit more active in, but when it occurs on the actual road, it's very rare for safe work to prosecute. And you will occasionally get a police investigation and a more traditional criminal prosecution. So our evidence would be, I suppose anecdotally, that more often than not is left for the police, not for safe work.
It's almost as though there's an unofficial carve out in Safe Works jurisdiction in this regard that once a truck's left the yard, it's really a matter for the police. Is that your experience?
Practically that's effectively how it works, only in most of the extreme circumstances that may be the case.
And I assume from the public work that TWU has been doing in the advocacy that that means issues like systemic issues like fatigue have not been adequately reviewed by the coroner's court?
Yeah, absolutely. And like when the police are investigating a road, a road incident of any kind, whether it involves a truck or not, they're looking to a strike because that's fault in the incident. And even if the truck driver is at fault in the incident, what the police don't look at in the context of their investigation that safe work should look at and will look at are those bigger systemic issues that you were talking about.
So in this, there are two options in that situation if you've had a fatality on the roads. And then they're not necessarily mutually exclusive. One is safe work, do the investigation and look to see if there are some systemic issues that led up to the incident, the death. The other is that the police and/or safe work pull together a brief for the coroner and the coroner looks at any kind of systemic issues. Do you have a view about where that dividing line should be?
Our prevailing view is that workplace deaths are workplace deaths and while the road transport workplaces are different to most others, it is still a workplace and there is still an underlying duty on PCBUs to ensure safety in those workplaces. And so we don't see a reason why workplace fatalities in the road transport industry would be treated differently to other workplace fatalities in a legal sense after that occurred.
I understand. Thanks, Mr. Wright.
Other committee members, do you have questions for the witnesses? Miss Sharp?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you. Thanks for coming in today and thank you for your submissions. My question is to Mr. Classens or Ms. Belet. I just wanted to, I was quite surprised that after a serious incident, I know particularly train drivers have, you know, significant issues with people harming themselves with trains and, you know, that's, it's not, unfortunately not a, not a rare enough occurrence. I was interested in the fact that you said that sometimes after an incident that a worker is, goes through three or four different alcohol and drug tests. Can you, I was surprised by that. Can you just take us through what happens in those circumstances?
Thank you, Miss Sharp, for the question. I think, I do believe a lot of it is through miscommunication. Quite often you'll have the incident and I'll speak to an example where the incident rail commander will arrive on site, they're authorised to perform a drug and alcohol test, which they do straight up. Then they'll go off and do other things associated with managing that incident. Then the police will turn up and quite often the police, the first thing they will do is administer another drug and alcohol test without knowing that it's already been administered by the incident rail commander. So the impacted employee is usually sitting somewhere in an office at the station, if that's available, or next, or in the train, which can happen, or next to the train, unfortunately, while they're subjected to, and it has been reported to us that it has actually happened on a third occasion where one, an impacted employee was actually tested three times through lack of communication. I do not, I don't suggest there's any malice involved in this. I think it's just a lack of processes in place, Alex, if you'd like to add anything.
No, only that quite clearly though, when the police generally turn up on site, they take control of the situation and it doesn't matter what anybody else has done, they will run their own processes. Unfortunately, this situation has developed over a number of years when we were all part of a vertically integrated railway back in the days of State Rail Authority and even in the early days of Rail Corp, there was always a general understanding that the railway ran its own race. In fact, we used to get, the railway would actually, the police would actually get permission to come on site because in those days, the police weren't allowed anywhere near the danger zone as it was, because they have to be specially trained to be able to do that, to make sure that they're not hit by trains. And the railway used to do, administer the breath testing and the alcohol, so the alcohol and drug testing and they would also take all the statements in a format that was required by the police and the coroner. Subsequently though, what's happened is that because of the, you know, breakup of the railways, the potential selling off of parts of it, et cetera, et cetera, we've now ended up sort of in this situation where we've got people being breath tested on a number of occasions on the, for the same incident. We've got, with different statements being taken in different formats. So, you know, it's really disappointing for us that somebody who's already been involved in a traumatic experience is having to relive that experience several times over because of a, you know, a bureaucratic nightmare that we've created. We did some years ago write to Gladys Bericclian when she was the Transport Minister and asked her to intervene and try and do something about the multiple agency requests for different types of information and unfortunately, we've never been able to get past that. So we still have a situation where, you know, there'll be a critical incident and then there'll be numerous people will come and approach us for different statements under different jurisdictions. You will see in our submission, we've asked for any statements to be taken under the rail safety legislation because that does give us some protections from self-incrimination. Obviously, the intent of that legislation is to try and make sure that everybody tells the whole truth and nothing but the truth and has, because, you know, when you've got a critical incident, you want to actually get to the bottom of what's actually created the situation so we can prevent it from happening again. So, so yeah.
Really, so just to, just to stop you there, I mean, it's really, it's very similar to what happens in health with the root cause analysis, the process that you're describing, isn't it? I mean, my understanding of it is that, well, this was previously the case, that, you know, the idea is that, yes, you want everyone to basically explain exactly what they believe happened, what they believe went wrong, without the fear of further prosecution. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah.
And, and the, and so, given the, I mean, we've talked a lot in this inquiry about the fact that, you know, often it's many, it can be years after an event before there's actually a coronial inquiry. Are those reports under the Rail Safety Act, are they admissible and or used by the coroner?
I understand that that is correct, but I'm not a lawyer, so you might want to double check that, but my understanding is generally they can, they're available, aren't they?
To my understanding, they are, but we're happy to take that question on notice and respond back.
I mean, I'm just interested, again, the sort of parallels with health are something that we've talked a lot about where, where at the moment, the root cause analysis is not provided to the coroner because there's a view that health is dealing with it and the systemic issues are dealt with and, you know, because of that issue around protection for the employee, they can't, you know, the nurses had quite a different view. So I'm just interested, I really, if you could just take on notice, I'm just particularly interested about, A, whether they are admissible and B, whether that's a regular, you know, that's kind of the common practice or not.
We'll take both those points on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point.
No, thanks a lot. Thanks for that. That's it for me for the moment.
And Ms. Cusack or Mr. Roberts, do you have questions? I might ask a couple of questions myself, starting with.
Sorry, none from me, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Cusack. I might start by asking some questions in relation to the RTBU submission. I understand your submission in relation to streamlining the taking of a statement to one statement only and in relation to the drug and alcohol testing. In relation to coroner's investigators' training, what's been the experience of the union in relation to that? Is it, is it that the investigators, police investigators seconded to the coroner's office don't seem to have the appropriate awareness of the rail safety regulations? Has that been your experience or is there a different experience?
Yes, thank you. That has been reported to us by some of our members, not all the time, on every occasion. And as you understand, the railways is a very complex system. It involves federal legislation, rules, network rules and policies. And with those complexities, there are questions that are asked by the investigators that really don't correlate with railway speak and how one of our members would relate to that question and it causes further stress to the member because they're trying to process what the question is and try and relate it back to how it fits in in railway terminology as every industry has its own idiosyncrasies and terminology. So it can be complex.
But more than that, in your industry, you've got the rail safety regulator with its own statutory framework, which is not, which is far removed from just having the idiosyncrasies of its own sort of jargon. I mean, there's a whole series of different requirements.
As I said, we've actually got three. So we've actually got the National Rail Safety Regulator, which actually, you know, ONZO they call it, and it tries to apply national rail regulation right across the whole country. We've also got an independent New South Wales investigative body called OTSI, the Office of Transport Safety Investigators, which I personally really like. I actually think OTSI do an amazing job and as did ITSA. We had our own independent transport safety regulator in New South Wales called ITSA. That, of course, was disbanded some years ago in New South Wales because people wanted to use the national legislation. I actually think that that was a backward step. We got ITSA as a virtue of, you know, Glenbrook waterfall and a number of really bad rail accidents, which said that we needed to put more extreme focus on a New South Wales basis. Those, those instruments have been taken away from us. And then, of course, you've got safe work. So we've got all these different regulatory bodies, you know, coming at us. And then essentially, you've also got ATSB as well, the Australian Transport Safety Bureau, which most of the time will delegate to OTSI, as I understand it. So it's very confusing for a lot of people as to who's actually going to do what. And like Helen's already said, you know, that the rail industry, most of us join this job for life. We've been fortunate enough to fall into a job that we all really liked. Nobody wants to leave it, but we have got our own language, we've got our own terminology, grown up over many years and so it is very confusing for a lot of people. So what we do, would, would like is to have some sort of consistency around the investigative model, some consistency around the terminology and, and for those things to be taken into account. Because at the end of the day, we actually want every incident really investigated, we want to prevent any future deaths and the only way we can do that is by actually getting to the basis of all the information very, very quickly. And I, you know, anything that you, you can do in that space to help us with that would be certainly appreciated.
Would it be of use, you know, if the committee was prepared to recommend something like, when the coroner is doing the investigations, obviously, I think under the Coroners Act, they second police officers to do, to be their investigators, whether they should have the same facility to second people from the state safety regulators who would actually have the existing technical knowledge to assist the police?
Yeah, absolutely. I think OTSI is certainly an organisation that's geared to do that. As I understand it, they recently got a fairly good cash injection again from the state government, so they are in a position to be able to provide advice in that space. I think that would be a very relevant step.
Yep. One part of your submission is in relation to the suppressing of the names of transport workers. I'd just like you to talk to us a little bit about that because I guess, you know, there's a number of inquiries, you know, there's ICAC, there's criminal cases where people are witnesses, not always persons of interest, but none of their names by and large are suppressed. How should we view this request?
So we understand that under section 59, and we're talking about under section 59 and bear with me because I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a legal expert, so if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected, please. I don't want to be that person. But under section 59, where our members and employees are required to give evidence, their names become, because it is a state-owned institution, it automatically attracts media with it. And the best description I can give to this as an example is, and I did have authorisation to use. to use, Damien Mulholland, whose name, whose name was up there with the Glenbrook disaster. He ended up with media camped on his lawn, which was extremely traumatising. And we understand the railways can only mitigate to a certain degree. But when it comes to the, the inquest aspect, which is a number of years down the track, he, no pun intended, he had to relive that with his family being approached by media and reliving those, all the details, the inner details of the evidence he gave. What we're requesting is we note in section 74 that the coroner does have power. However, this is tied through to suppressing the whole evidence. We're not actually asking for the whole evidence to be suppressed. We're just asking for the name to be suppressed, to offer some extra insulation to our membership for when it comes years down, down the track, after they've been given their evidence and everything, that they don't have to relive, it's bad enough reliving the trauma in an inquest, but then to have the media and undergo all that scrutiny again, like Damien did, like the driver from Waterfall, he, his wife and family had that, through to Granville, the train driver in Granville. And I do remember Granville, my dad was on that train. And I remember vaguely, I was a child, but I remember the media around that. So this is to add an extra layer. We know, we know we can't take care of everything. But if we can just add that little bit of comfort around the coroner's end, bearing in mind it's years down the track, when it does come through to an inquest, it would add a bit of extra comfort for our members and their families.
Oh, I think I understand the position of the union. In relation to when your members are, you know, interviewed by police as part of a coronial, does the union have much visibility or involvement of that with your members? Or do you find out afterwards that the members have already given statements or been interviewed?
No, generally, we're fairly, like, you know, I mean, most people would recognise the fact that we're a high-density union, so about 98% of the members who can be a member are a member of the union. So, and because we're a big railway family, generally speaking, we're pretty close to the member all the way through the process. You know, not always perfect, but generally speaking, we're part of that whole process. So, you know, when somebody's got to be interviewed four or five times, for example, we're there with them, you know, to be there as much as we can as, as support. Because it is a very traumatic time in most cases and, and it takes a lot. It's, you know, any sort of incident on the railway is a tough one. But when it involves the coroner's court, it's automatically really, really bad. Because, you know, we all have family, we all have loved ones, we all know what it's like when you lose somebody. And for some of us in the railway, of course, when we first joined, it was a given thing that at some point you'd be there at somebody's death. It's a very traumatic experience for most of us. And, and, you know, we need all the help we can get in some cases. And we have found that through, nobody's fault, I don't think, but certainly the breakup of the railways, the breakup of the regulatory model, the breakup of a whole variety of things have made that particular job really difficult for us when, when somebody's involved in a critical incident.
Yep. And do you represent your members when they have to give evidence at an actual coronial hearing or do you sort of provide them with other forms of support as well?
Normally, we provide them with, with the support that they require. So in each case, it's slightly different. You know, on occasion, we've had to hire lawyers to represent our members. On other occasions, it's just been there as a shoulder to lean on, you know, that kind of stuff.
Depends on the need.
It just depends on, it depends on the circumstance, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr Classens and Ms Balllett. I might now turn my questions to Mr Wright. What's the union's visibility with the coronial investigations with their members? Do you also have a high degree of visibility of the process through your members? Do they reach out to you if and when they're being interviewed or when they have to appear?
Well, I suppose the first instance is that it is actually exceedingly rare for our members to actually even get to that stage. As I was saying in response to Mr Schubridge's questions earlier, the number that actually, the number of road transport industry fatalities that actually make it to the stage of a full-scale coronial inquest is quite, quite minimal. So it is exceedingly rare. To the best of my knowledge, we don't provide them with representation at an inquest, so we offer other support as we do to all of our members.
Yep. In relation to the question I was asking, Mr Classens, about the, sort of the different regulatory models, the different safety models or the different accountabilities, you've described in page four of the TWU submission about the overlap between police, coronial and the WHS frameworks. Do you think it would provide assistance if the coroner was also able to access the expertise of Safe Work investigators when they're looking at road safety fatalities? As opposed to just relying entirely on the police, which is, as I understand it, what they do at the moment?
Yeah, certainly. And, and, you know, as I said earlier, Safe Work don't pursue investigations of road transport fatalities as, as much as we as a unit would like them to. And so whether that, that expertise within Safe Work that you're suggesting even exists, I'm not sure of because it's not often that they do investigate road transport fatalities at Safe Work. But absolutely, if, if there is that, that expertise in Safe Work, particularly when the WHO and the SAA prosecutions allow and almost encourage Safe Work to wait until the conclusion of an inquest before deciding to proceed to prosecution or not, it makes sense for, for the people that are sort of halfway through an investigation, waiting for an inquest to finish. If they can assist the inquest in any way, then it, yeah, that would absolutely make sense.
Yep. And there should be a consistent framework as between the sort of coronial, the relationship between the coronial investigation and any criminal investigation and prosecution, there should be a similar relationship between any WHS proceeding and coronials. The legislation should be equivalent.
Yeah, and our submission talks, touches on a couple of the more minor things, like, you know, the Coroners Act refers to obligations for the coroner to share certain information and statements collected with identity and specifically names of DPP. But in the event of a workplace fatality, the DPP is seldom the one bringing the prosecution. So we'd like to hope that in practice, that information is being shared between the coroner and Safe Work in instances where Safe Work are bringing the prosecution. But, yeah, if that framework doesn't exist, it should.
Okay. Well, thank you. Committee members, are there further questions for any of the witnesses?
I had a question at the RTBU to tell on that, Alex.
Sure.
Thanks so much for your submission. I know that there's a strong interest from your members' side to just be, to just be asked questions once. But given there are likely very different issues that are at play in the mind of an investigator, looking at, say, a coronial investigation, looking at maybe the root causes of what went wrong in an accident, or a work health safety investigation, which might be looking at kind of some of the very workplace-specific issues, as opposed to maybe a police and a criminal investigation, which may be looking at only the very sort of short period of time leading up to an accident and potential negligence or the like. Do you accept that there will be occasions when, even though it's not preferable, that we want the, there'll be a need for more than one interview of your members?
Oh, look, I, I don't think there's, the follow-up interviews are not unusual. Because you're quite right. I mean, as, depending on how long an investigation takes, it will require follow-up interviews. So we are used to that process. But, you know, if it's coming from the one location, that's okay. We can, we can deal with that, we can live with that because you certainly build up a level of rapport with the investigator anyway when they're investigating things. And it's, it's certainly not unusual for them to contact you again somewhere down the track and say, look, we need a bit more information around this particular issue. So, yeah, we certainly accept that and we understand that that's a need. The, the, the issue at the moment is that the different agencies that all want their peace, that's the problem. Having five different agencies coming at our members in, at different timings and different, you know, with different needs, that's what's making it very difficult for our members.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
Can I add to that, if I may? On top of those, then we end up with Sydney and New South Wales trains coming and approaching our members because they're looking at disciplinary outcomes at the same time.
That's true.
While this is all occurring. So not only are our members addressing the serious concerns of statements providing those informations, because they want our, they're also, on the back of their mind is, they're fighting for their jobs as well, which is very preemptive, considering there's usually not an outcome. But that starts straight away.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know that the jurisdiction doesn't have any, there's no jurisdiction over that for this, for the cause here, but I just want to paint the full picture.
And that's true because the last, maybe not the last, but they, we had an infrastructure worker killed at, at Granville a couple of years ago. And within weeks, you know, the railway were, you know, knocking on people's doors, you know, with disciplinary outcomes, et cetera, et cetera. So, so that's a real concern. Because, you know, we do want people to be able to be able to be very honest and open when they're providing the information, so that we can prevent another incident from occurring, you know. It's not helped when they're worried about what their job, their job's going to be, you know, and what their future looks like.
But I'll, I'll give you just a hypothetical example. If there is an accident at a level crossing and the suggestion may be that the person drove, person drove a vehicle, they were intoxicated, they hadn't seen this, they hadn't stopped at the signs and the, and, and an accident occurs. Police may, may be well, you know, investigating just simply that, that, that very incident. You know, whether the culpability of the person driving, the alcohol content, looking at whether or not if they survived, if, if maybe the driver survived and the passenger died, the culpability of that driver. Yet a coroner may actually look at a series of accidents at level crossings and actually realise that level crossings are the problem and then investigate and have a series of, an investigation directed to a totally different issue. Well, not totally different, but a significantly different issue. Do you accept that in those circumstances, inevitably, the driver would potentially, potentially be investigated, interviewed at least twice?
Oh, yeah, look, and we'd have no real issue with that in that circumstance because, I mean, and it's interesting that you picked level crossings because it is one that gets a hell of a lot of attention, you know. And we all do, and we all want something done about level crossing accidents, absolutely. So, so anything anybody can do in that process, we, we understand that and we, you know, we would actually certainly, you know, be involved in assisting that process. But again, it's not multiple agencies, it's just a follow-up interview, I suspect. So, and that'd be okay, that'd be fine.
Well, well, the first, the first, first investigation may be done by, you know, police, the, the second investigation may be done by work health safety or it might be done. But, you know, they go, they have different purposes, a criminal prosecution.
No, no.
And a coronial investigation. And, and often those different purposes will require a different line of inquiry and investigation. Do you accept that?
Yes.
We do accept that, but I think that also feeds into having the investigator that's specially trained. And going back on Mr Sell's suggestion that perhaps seconded from the rail regulators might be of great assistance because they do look at the big picture. I'm not saying that to be obstructive, please interpret that, that way.
No, no, Ms Balllett, I didn't. A number of people have suggested that one thing that is really needed is a body of expert evidence, expert, expert capacity within the coroner's court itself to, to have a look at some of these systemic issues and that there be, you know, a pool of experts that the coroner's court can draw on. Would you have a view about whether that might be duplicating something that's already existing or would be beneficial?
Look, my, without thinking it through, because you've just sort of dropped it on us, but.
By all means, take it on notice.
But look, my, look, my suggestion is the one that I agreed to earlier. You've got the Office of Transport Safety Investigators in New South Wales already. It's already an, an agency that's been set up to look into this area, to look at all of our accidents. They're already got the resources in place. My, my strong suggestion would be you utilise those, those resources as and when the coroner needs it.
Well, just, just to Mr Schubridge's point, we've received evidence through submissions that in Victoria, they have a coronial support unit or investigations unit, which assists the coroners there, do research, formulate more robust recommendations that might have some kind of robust or practical effects, so that the coroners are not just looking at the evidence in their particular matter and sort of saying, oh, this would be a good idea. There's actually, if you like, a body of ongoing research that they can draw on and hopefully which will be shared through the national coronial database. Having something like that in New South Wales, which we don't currently have, a number of submissions have suggested that would be of great assistance in providing outcomes. Is that something any of your unions would have a view about, as, as whether that should be a good thing?
We might, we might need to take that question.
Please do.
On notice and seek some further advice.
Sure. And the same to, same to the TWU, Mr Wright, if you could take that on notice?
Certainly having expertise involved in helping the coroner make their decisions would seem to be a sensible solution to many of the, our concerns.
Yep.
And just, sorry, Chair, if I just add to it. The, the thing for us is like, so you've got the coronial, coronial inquests, which, you know, they produce whatever set of recommendations is, and the coroner is then obligated to, to provide copies of those to whoever the recommendations relate to. What we would, what is unclear for us as to how much it's happening and what, if it isn't happening, we think absolutely should be, is where a coroner, an inquest identifies systems failure of some kind and issues recommendations to, to resolve that, ensuring that Safe Work are provided with a copy of those recommendations and are then empowered to sort of pursue them in the context of ensuring that that PCBU actually adheres to them. Because, you know, it just seems like, you know, that both trying to achieve the same, both organisations, rather, are trying to achieve the same goal there, but if that information's not being shared, the coroner's sort of issuing recommendations and Safe Work are not being notified and aren't there to ensure that they're actually enacted upon and that that PCBU is fulfilling their duties under the act.
That's a good point, Mr Wright. Committee members, are there any last questions for these witnesses? If not, I think the, the RTBU and the Transport Workers Union for their submissions and for giving of their time today and providing us with your oral evidence and your further insights to the issues facing your industries. You're excused. Thank you very much. The secretary will be in touch with you about the questions taken on notice.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure. Are our next lot of witnesses available? Okay, let's bring them in. Good afternoon. Can the witnesses hear me? Ms Malia, Mr?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good.
Yes. Yes, can you hear us?
We can hear you. Mr Kelly, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm fine.
Oh, good. This is the first bracket of witnesses where we've been able to hear the witnesses and they've been able to hear us without incident so far. That's good. All right, well, we right to proceed? All right, well, we welcome our next group of witnesses from the CFMU Construction and General Division, New South Wales, and also from the Mining and Energy Union. Could each witness please state their name and position title and indicate, and swear either an oath or an affirmation, hopefully from the information that's been provided? And we'll start with you, Ms Malia.
Yep, so Rita Malia, I'm the President of the Construction, Forestry, Mining and Energy Union Construction and General Division in New South Wales. And I'll take an affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
Ivan Smith, partner with Taylor and Scott Lawyers. We represent the Construction General Division of the CFMU. I'll take an affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr Kelly.
Yes, I'm Graham. I'm the General Secretary of the Mining and Energy Union, which is a division of the Construction, Forestry, Maritime, Mining and Energy Union. Construction, Forestry, Maritime, Mining and Energy Union. Uh, I'll do the oath. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Stuart Barnett, Solicitor, Slater and Gordon Lawyers, uh, for the Mining and Energy Union Division of the CFMEU. I'll take an oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. Um, uh, both organisations have made written submissions to this inquiry. The CFMEU Construction and General Division is, has provided submission number fifty-two and submission number fifty-four is from the Mining and Energy Union. I thank both unions, uh, for their written submission. Would, would either organisation like to give a brief opening statement in support? And I might start with the Mining and Energy Union if you, if you wish to give a brief opening statement.
No worries, thanks. Um, but ultimately the Mining and Energy Union's been around since eighteen fifty-four. Uh, we can trace our lineage way back to prior to the Eureka Stock Aid, uh, so a hundred and sixty-eight years. We've had check inspectors in coal mine legislation since nineteen twelve. Um, who were basically under today's world, a local check inspector was the, the internal auditor and the, uh, district check inspector was the external auditor, who used to turn up to, over time, uh, make the mines safer. And the reality is that they were the champions of the industry. But unfortunately, too many coal miners have been killed over numerous years. And as a result, we're very, uh, well, not pleased, but we're very willing to give this, uh, submission to this inquiry so that a very important function is being valuable to the mining industry and the mining union is, um, properly funded and recognised, um, for the role that it plays. And that's the coronial, uh, inquest. Um, you know, there's a, there's a wall, uh, Stu and I are in the Cessnock office and there's a wall outside this office here with eighteen hundred names of the men and boys and unfortunately one female who have been killed in coal mining, uh, in the, in this district, uh, which is a, a really large number, which suggests that, uh, we've had a large number of, um, coronial inquests. And Stuart Barnett, who's with me, Stuart's actually done eighty-four deaths, seventy-five separate inquests for the, for the union, uh, over his thirty-year career, um, which we think is important because he's got a history of how this, um, this function of government can work and, and how it can be used to make a difference. Uh, in fact, off the back of the Gretley Inquiry was some of the most major changes that came out of, um, uh, the coal industry to, to really ramp up its safety performance. And, uh, so we, we're very grateful for that. Uh, and I'll just make one other comment, uh, if I may, and that is basically, you know, our union's, uh, its mantra has always been about safety, it, we, we, that's our focus all the time. You know, we're involved with Coal Mines Insurance, a workers comp company that, that is a monopoly insuring coal. We've got Coal Service Health, the largest record of, health records of a workforce probably in the world, if not certainly in a, in the country. They also have Mines Rescue Service and, and we play a, a really important role in every aspect of our industry. And, uh, as I said, coronial inquests are very important to us. And that's why we think our recommendations should be considered and taken on board by the inquiry, um, as, as a pragmatic way to continue to improve, uh, the outcomes for people in our industry and an outcome of which is a better and safer industry. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Malia, do you wish to give a, a brief opening statement?
Yes, um, thank you. So thank you for the opportunity, uh, for myself and Ivan Simic to, um, be heard today. Um, we've provided a short submission in writing, but just to, uh, highlight some quick points. Um, my quick look at the, the union believes, sorry, there is a real utility in having, um, within the jurisdiction of the coroner's court, the capacity to investigate the cause of workplace fatalities. Uh, my quick look at the decisions of the coroner's court on its website, um, the, the latest one that I could see that was not a police force-related workplace death, but dates to about two thousand seventeen. So it's been a long time since, from our reckoning that the coroner's court has actually played any role in, um, exposing what's occurred in the, as a result of a workplace death or what's caused a workplace death, other than like I say, in some specific and key areas. Um, we believe that the coroner's court is well-placed, if properly resourced, to investigate workplace deaths, their cause and more importantly, recommendations for reform in the process or regulations that might prevent a repeat. In years of experience of speaking to, um, families of one, of loved ones lost, access to the coroner's court to allow them to ask questions about what happened to their loved ones is very important for them in understanding how the death occurred. There is no other process available to them in a formal setting. Prosecutions and breaches of the act are not a sufficient substitute. Um, and this function of providing answers does provide important closure. And I believe you've heard from, um, Ms. Patricia Casaniti about their experience in trying to get a coronial, um, investigation into the death of Christopher. For families who've lost a loved one in the workplace, the coronial process is an essential process that provides the best and most transparent evidence of what happened to their loved one at work. And often comes with the opportunity of having to hear from, um, and seeing workmates and supervisors and others who last saw their loved one, uh, or was with them when they died. It's also, um, important to note that it can support whistleblowers and others in the workplace who might and can be protected and therefore be more frank in the giving of, um, their evidence about what may or may not have occurred, uh, leading up to the death of someone at work. Prosecution by the regulator is also very important, but the manner in which a criminal prosecution is run and for good reason, does not provide the opportunity to explore more widely the cause of death, the factors resulting or leading up to the incident, who was involved and what can be done to address the safety issues into the future. Like I say, to importantly prevent the recurrence of a similar incident. And in construction, we still see, um, as they do in mining energy, um, too many workers that are killed at the workplace. Um, uh, and these, these incidences from our perspective are not properly, are not fully investigated in terms of what could be done to prevent those, um, those deaths from occurring. So for these reasons, a suitably resourced coroner to carry out, carry out this function is supported and would contribute to the effort that continues to be needed to prevent workplace deaths. We've also had, um, the chance to, um, read the Mining and Energy Union submission and also very supportive of, um, the, the practical, um, recommendations that they've made in that submission. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Malia. Um, I'll open questions from committee members to these witnesses. Who would like to, uh, commence questioning?
I have a couple to start with, Chair, if that's okay.
And Mr. Shubridge?
Um, look, thank you, um, thanks to all of you for your evidence today and your submissions. If, if, if I am to understand it correctly, Mr. Kelly and, and Mr. Barnett, you, you have seen the coronial jurisdiction deliver systemic benefits in the, the mining industry after, um, i- is that right? That there's been an historical element of recommendations from the coroner actually delivering systemic benefits for safety in particular in the mining industry?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, over the years, that's changed a little bit as the, as the resource regulator has altered his position. But initially, when I first started this type of work, there was really only the coronial process to give rise to recommendations. Uh, and to be fair to the industry, often by the time we got to that point, the industry had implemented its, its own recommendations. Um, but, uh, yes, the coronial process has been very important over the years. Um, one of the, the matters that we go to though is the inconsistency that, um, you can't always be sure what sort of hearing and what depth of hearing you're going to get. So I guess my experience is that you get some very, very thorough investigations and reports and recommendations. You also get, get some inquiries where frankly very little comes out of it. And, and, uh, that's why some of our, our submissions go to that issue, that there needs to be a, a, a follow-up and a, a, a formal follow-up. Um, but yes, the coronial process has been very important. And I might add on a personal note, my observation, very important, Emily's point of view.
Yeah, and, um, would your observation be that say in the last ten, fifteen years, that it's been more, more difficult for, or it's been less common for matters to have the kind of fully resourced public hearing in the coroner's court that would have been perhaps more common before then?
Yes, um, no, no doubt about that. Uh, a- again, by way of balance, um, it somewhat depends upon the quality of the report that's provided by the resource regulator. Um, a- a- and on occasions, those reports will be so comprehensive that it's difficult to argue that you need, uh, a- another week of hearing. On the other hand, um, it's not been easy to convince magistrates necessarily to, to give you the time and, and, and leeway to, to have a full coronial inquiry. Um, i- i- in part, I, I'm assuming due to lack of court time and, and so on.
But in your industry, um, there is always, there's, there's, there's at least that other element, which is an adequately resourced resource regulator that's working in parallel on some of these safety issues and responding to fatalities. You've got that kind of dual track in your industry.
Yeah, that's right. And, and, and that, and that came off, uh, ultimately the back of the Gretley fatality, which was four miners killed back in about ninety-six from memory. Um, and the reality from that and the RAN review that occurred from it ultimately resulted in a, uh, a properly resourced regulator who, who had a dedicated arm, who only focuses on the, the more serious or, or fatality-driven arrangements. And Stuart's right, as he pointed out there, you know, we get, we get reports now from the inspector even for serious injuries that are extremely comprehensive, bigger than we would have got, uh, pre, uh, two thousand in the coronial inquest. You wouldn't have had that sort of evidence provided there, where now you do. Uh, and so, uh, the need for us isn't as great, but I, I appreciate what, uh, Rita was saying before about the families and, and the like. And I know, uh, as part of my job used to be, when someone got killed, the work was to go and talk to them. You know, in the, in the, you know, days after that someone had passed away. And them understanding what happens is a critical point and getting that opportunity to do that, uh, is really important to lots of people. In our industry, because of our check inspectors, we already have a fair idea what happened. And so we can, we can give the family some comfort, but I, I'd hate to think how difficult that is in other industries that don't have that luxury.
Well, I might go to you, Ms. Malia and Mr. Simic. Um, th- there isn't that regulator focused on safety in the wor- in, in the construction industry. Is there any, any absence of that, um, what kind of investigations are you finding happening after a fatality? And, and we heard from, as Katnans already earlier today, of those circumstances. But what are you finding is the, the practice?
We've, um, and you've probably heard us in other inquiries, been fairly critical of, um, the approach to that, that safe work takes with, uh, investigations and prosecutions. And I guess the Casaniti prosecution is a prime example. That was an extensive investigation and the inspectors on the ground, he'd interview a lot of people from a lot of entities, but yet in the end, there was one corporate entity that was prosecuted, um, very unclear from the prosecution, really what ultimately happened because it was a, uh, a, a, a case that was, uh, with a company pleaded, um, guilty in effect. And basically leaves so many answers, uh, so many questions unanswered in respect of what actually happened on that day in a very serious and significant scaffold collapse. And, and that's repeated, you know, time and time again. But I think Ivan could probably speak to a few more examples where he's had to assist families in the common law jurisdiction, trying to work out what has happened, just somebody to, uh, die at work.
Yes, there's, there's one particularly I'd like to address, issue I'd like to address committee now. Uh, and there's a lot of criticism of safe work in New South Wales, but they're basically a prosecutor. And the problem, you know, having this prosecutorial model is it's not about the cause of death or finding out what really happened. What happens in these situations, we've, we've got no industrial manslaughter laws here in New South Wales and it becomes basic an exercise in damage control for corporations. Nobody ever goes to jail for a workplace death here in New South Wales. The investigation is totally conducted behind closed doors. The key witnesses to a death are surrounded by lawyers from the employer, uh, during their, their, their interview with work, with, sorry, not work, but safe work in New South Wales. And as I said, just looking at the Casaniti model, what happens, that's a perfect example. The matter's pleaded out, you know, as if it was a drink driving offence or something like that. We don't ever really get to the, the, the true cause because somebody's put their hand up and said, I'll, I'll cop that fine, sir. And that's the end of the process. And that's why there's, you know, I don't even know if it serves any real deterrents, uh, in the sense of, uh, creating better safe work environments. That is a major, major hole, black hole we have here in New South Wales ever since we stopped, uh, having coroners pull people to a witness box and say, well, did you say what happened to him before he died?
The, the Casaniti's evidence, Mrs. Casaniti's evidence was that in that case, after the plea bargain had been accepted, that the actual court process was a matter of hours, if that.
That's, that's, that's correct. I was there for the, I was, I was there for the penalty hearing, it's reduced to a penalty hearing. I was, I was, I was there for the whole process that saw it firsthand, uh, as, as a mutual observer. And that's no criticism of the, either the, the court or the prosecutor. It's, it's, that's what it all looks designed to do. It's not designed to do what a true coroner's, you know, the function of a coroner is to actually investigate the cause of an unnatural death, full stop. The coroner has power to protect witnesses and that is so, so important that they are able to give their evidence in open court without fifty solicit, you know, a whole bunch of lawyers around and basically telling them what to say to the safe work in New South Wales so we can minimise the fine, you know what I mean?
Um, I've got a question for the, for all of the witnesses and it's this. In Queensland, I think they have twenty full-time coroners. I think in Victoria, it's, it's certainly over ten, I think it's twelve, but we'll find out on Friday when we go to visit the coroner's court. But in New South Wales, we're told that there are five point two full-time coroners. Outside of Sydney, a country magistrate's also fulfil the role of coroners, but eighty percent of their coronial workers sent back in to, to Lydcombe. Uh, this puts a lot of pressure on a limited pool of coroners. And I see that the Mining and Energy Union has supported a standalone coroner's court, if I can put it that way, a sort of independent, properly resourced, uh, court. Is that something that would go some way to alleviating that pressure and maybe leading to more workplace fatalities, having proper systems analysis provided?
If I might, uh, go first on that, um, it seems to me that a lot of the time and energy in a coronial inquiry and the lead-up to it is about planning, um, administration, fitting it into the magistrate's court system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a, a standalone system would allow day one to day end management of, of, of the process. So, uh, which would include consideration for whether a, a, an inquiry is necessary, if so, what length and what depth. At, at the moment, I, I don't think it would be disputed that magistrates in New South Wales, I would suspect, be the busiest judicial offices in the country. And, uh, uh, you know, having to do with three hundred traffic matters on a Wednesday, um, you know, committal hearings on the Thursday and then perhaps squeezing a coronial matter just seems to me doesn't allow, a- as good as the staff are, I must say, it doesn't allow for the proper planning. So I would have thought a dedicated administration for that process would go a long way towards it.
Yeah, another advantage, sort of what I can add, is, is the challenges that the mining industry's overcome over the years has been the ability to get it out in the open, what happened and to shine a light on it. And, uh, if we can do that in other industries, then their, their safety record, I'd like to think would improve. So the more opportunity to do it, and that's what our recommendation, uh, Stuart's spoken to is about, uh, is having more opportunities to do it if it's needed.
Ms. Malia and Mr. Simic?
Yeah, we would agree with all of those, uh, comments. I mean, you just have to look at, you know, the types of things the coroners in New South Wales has to currently look at and to think that those five point two people are also going to, in some comprehensive fashion, be given the resources and the time as it's currently set up to look at the cause of a workplace death or workplace deaths. Um, i- i- is an unreasonable request. So obviously part of our submissions, as, as the other submissions are, is that this needs to be properly resourced. We don't have any objection to it being a, uh, an independent standalone, um, jurisdiction that deals with, um, these sorts of inquiries. There is plenty of, uh, work for it to be done and, and probably as a result, we'd like to see, as Mr. Kelly has said, a light shine on how these, um, incidences and deaths occur and some real and meaningful, um, discussion about how they can be prevented in the future and also provide those families with such an important opportunity to ask questions in a, in a, in a way that you cannot do in a, in a, in a criminal prosecution. Um, they're completely cut out of the process apart from a limited opportunity to make a victim impact statement uh, if the court wants to hear one. So, um, absolutely think that there is, um, need for something like that to be properly resourced.
And that's one of the things that's come through quite clearly with the different evidence. We've, we've heard obviously a prosecution, whether it's a criminal prosecution under the mainstream criminal law or through the work health and safety legislation, it's to, it's to do a very limited fact finding, to find whether, you know, entity X committed, you know, Y offence on. fact-finding, to find whether, you know, entity X committed, you know, Y offence on a particular day. And sometimes that process will reveal the truth of what happened. But a lot of the time, particularly where there is a plea deal, if you like, reached between a defendant and the prosecution, key facts are obscured and you don't get to the truth. And that's, it seems to me, the great advantage in theory of the coroner's jurisdiction is that it can try to get to the truth, what are the facts, without necessarily saying who is guilty of a particular offence. That does seem to need to be strengthened. And in the workplace situation, if it's been years since there's been proper coronial consideration of workplace deaths, that must mean a lot of prevention that could be taken into account now is just not being known about, leading more people to be at risk.
Yeah, we couldn't remember the last one in construction that has occurred. I don't know if Ivan can recall one, but it'd have to be a very long time ago.
It was, I can. It was actually a gentleman who developed a construction of actually a public works job off a bridge and died down near Aladella in Milton. And just to give you, just to further endorse the comments of previous witnesses, you know, asking a country magistrate in Milton to line four days to set aside for a hearing to the cause of this death, especially in this situation, you had a boss who told the witnesses to go across the border into Victoria. And that takes a certain amount of resources and energy to fully and properly investigate. That was the death of a gentleman by the name of Mr. Mark Poy. But yeah, I fully endorse what Mr. Barnett, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Malia said in their evidence.
Committee members, are there further questions? Penny, Michelle.
Yes, thanks. Thanks both of you for coming in and for your submissions. This is raised in the miners' submission, but it's also a question, I think, for construction as well. You make your recommendation in your submission about the right to appear at a coronial inquest for the union. Can you, is that, my first question is, obviously, I assume that because of the request, it means that's not automatic. And I just wanted to know how that process goes and whether you sought to be able to appear previously and not been able to, whether you could just take me through the kind of, the involvement of the union through the processes, given the role that you play supporting families.
So from the mine worker's point of view, when you're acting for the family, of course, you're never going to be refused leave. Then comes the question whether the union should be separately represented. They often have members who are potential witnesses. And, you know, I think the union would basically take the stance that the interests of the union lies in the interests of the family and vice versa. But there can be occasions where members might have an interest different to the family. So in my experience, I have had occasions where there's been objections to me appearing on behalf of the union. But to date, I have always been granted leave. But before the current Coroners Act, the schedule provided that the organisation with members in a mine site where a fatality had occurred would have a right of appearance. That didn't find its way, as I can tell, into the current act. So in theory, there could be an objection raised, for example, to take an extreme example, if the family, the deceased was not a member of the union, the family had separate representation, the company, the resource regulator, if they all objected to the appearance of the union, it would be simply in the hands of the coroner as to whether the union was allowed to appear. Now, the difficulty with that is whilst so far we've been given leave, come the day, it could well happen. And it's important in the mining industry that findings are relayed across the industry. And of course, the people with the most interest in the safety are the members and mine workers. So their interests need to be represented. And I don't know why the schedule didn't find its way to the new act, but it was certainly there up until the current act. And I can actually say that I've had objections taken to my appearance in the past, but as I said, each time the coroner has gone our way.
Just on that point though, leaving aside, sorry Penny, continue.
I just wanted to see if Construction had a view about this as well.
Well, we'd be very supportive of that right existing, because we haven't had a coronial inquiry into a workplace death in a construction site for years. So, you know, families are being told themselves that inquiry is not needed. But of course, the union can also bring other information to the table, has a wealth of knowledge about how sites operate, should operate. It may have also had personnel who were present, you know, shortly after an incident has occurred, which would raise separate questions and separate issues than perhaps a family member or another person interested in the proceedings might have. So I think it's actually very useful in those serious circumstances to have the union there. And it would not in any way, I think, make it a problem for the coroner to do its work.
I've got just one more question, and then I'll go back to the other committee members. And again, it's to another recommendation in the miners' submission, which was about self-incrimination and the treatment of evidence. The inquiry's heard, you know, within the health system, with those root cause analysis, where, you know, a critical incident, you know, it's very much, you know, people be able to tell everything that they know, you know, on the basis of trying to get very, you know, as soon as possible, understand what went wrong, but also deal with all the systemic issues straight away. And there's some, you know, strong protections for nurses and others within that process. Similarly, the rail safety regulator has a similar process. Within your regulator, I just wanted to understand how it works, how it works in the mining industry and the use of any review. I mean, I think you've talked about there being, you know, really significant and detailed, good investigations. Is there, talk me through your submission and how that works with your regulator reports that go to the coroner.
I'll just make a couple of comments and hand on to Stuart, who's way more across the detail. But at a really high level, the really important part of the, everyone's got rights and being able to protect from self-incrimination is really important. And one of the things, again, to the theme of bringing things, shining a light on matters, is to make people give full and frank accounts. And so what happens in our world is the inspector can give a witness a certificate. That certificate is then able to be used to allow them to give all the evidence that needs to be provided. And that evidence can't be used against them, which ultimately gets to the root causes of the problems. Our submission, of course, is that should also extend into the coroner's court, because it currently doesn't. And just as a side note, like the union takes it extremely seriously. If we're worried that one of our members is not going to tell the whole truth, then we'll actually take them outside and have a long chat to them. We appreciate they've got rights, but they're also protected by the use of certificates. And so we want to know what happened. Now, if that's good or bad, doesn't matter, we want to know what happened.
So in the mining jurisdiction, the resource regulator inspectors can require any person who may have information relevant to the incident to provide written evidence. There's no choice on that. However, where it falls apart, and my observation is, some of the most distressing reactions I've seen over 30-odd years at an inquest has been when a witness refuses to give evidence on the basis that may incriminate them. It's very distressing for the family and is probably the area where I've seen the most reaction over all those inquests. My, our concern is there is a mechanism there that effectively follows the same process in the mining industry. That is, the coroner can require the witness to give evidence and can provide them with the certificate to the effect that the evidence won't be used against them unless they tell an untruth. But my observation is, the application of that is so inconsistent, you don't know until the day what's going to happen. And that's bad for the family, but it's bad for those advising the witnesses and the witnesses themselves. So taken to extreme, I've been in inquests where councillors simply stood up and said, my client doesn't wish to give evidence on the grounds that it may incriminate them. And the coroner said, oh, very well, they're excused. And I've had other extremes where the witness is taken question by question, which I think is probably the correct legal way to do it, and a judgment is made on each question as to whether that question and answer may tend to incriminate them, and then, of course, all the way in between. The coroner isn't always prepared to give a certificate. Again, that's something you only find out on the day. It seems to me, given that evidence can be compelled by the inspectorate in the mining industry, but then not necessarily tested in a coronial inquest, must take away some of the importance or meaning of that evidence. And if, if we want to know exactly what happened and it's to be tested by the parties, it seems to me there should be a consistent process whereby every witness is compelled to give their evidence.
Thank you. Construction, you have a view about these issues generally, again, knowing that you haven't been through?
Yeah, we probably wouldn't disagree. It's important to protect people's rights and it's important to, in the course of that, encourage people to come and tell the truth and tell, you know, what happened and how someone has lost their life as a result, or another people.
I might just add, a member, a committee member, the coroner, of course, if they get to a stage where someone is likely to be recommended, or the papers referred, as they used to say, for prosecution, the coroner can, of course, shut down the inquest at that moment. So there's that further protection for a witness or an organisation, if the coroner forms that view partway through the evidence as well.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Committee members, are there any further questions of these witnesses?
Well, I had a question about the timing, if that's okay.
Sure.
Do you have a view about what is a reasonable time within which a coronial investigation should be concluded, given the importance particularly family members can have, can place on getting some answers through a coronial investigation? And maybe if you have any current experience with the length of time for civil proceedings or work health prosecutions, that might shed some light on that. I might go to the CFMU first.
We would say they should be done as soon as possible after, you know, keeping in mind the complexity of investigations and interviews, et cetera, and people have, you know, various rights in that process as well. But, you know, the matter should be brought before the coroner as soon as possible. And as Mr. Barnett said, that could be at the very beginning, and then there'd be a timetable in which, you know, the regulator might have to have more time to provide information or putting together the evidence if it's a very complicated matter. I know, for example, in the Cassanidi case, there were hundreds of people that were interviewed, because I sat in a lot of the interviews on behalf of, with our members. So, you know, that can take time and you don't want that to be rushed and you want it to be done properly. But when you get to the point, as in the Cassanidi case, that prosecution by Safe Work has been run and finalised, and the coroner then says to the family, well, now that process is finished, I'm very sorry, you can't now have a coronial inquiry, there seems to be no utility in that, that, you know, two years after the event is obviously, you know, a system failure from our perspective. So obviously, within reason and, you know, ensuring that investigations occur properly and thoroughly as soon as possible, and comes back to that submission of the Mining and Energy Union about having a proper, a properly resourced court or process that does that from beginning to end, so that these things don't go on for years and years, you know, waiting for some comfort, for the end questions being answered to the families.
Well, if you look to coronial proceedings from three decades ago and pretty much all of history of coronial proceedings, prior to that, coronial hearings were being held within a few months of a death was the traditional timeframe. Now, the modern coronial hearings are unlikely to get a start before three years after the death and sometimes some five years after the death. Is there such a degree of complexity that we should be accepting that?
Well, my observation is that in deaths in industry, and I think someone might have mentioned this before, it becomes really a large part about management of the various interested parties in looking after their interest as opposed to what happened. You're correct, it'd be unusual, in my experience, to get a hearing lasting more than half a day for a coronial inquest inside 12 months. And I see some of the other evidence about two to three years. That's why I would have, and I might say this, the trouble with sort of 12 months, two years, sod's law is that it seems to come up at about the time of the anniversary. And so often, you're dealing with the family and all of a sudden, they're dealing with an anniversary, but they're also dealing with the inquest. And so it keeps the thing alive. Civil proceedings these days, if they run in the Supreme Court to a hearing, are going to take two years. Prosecutions, in my experience in the mining industry, the prosecutor or the regulator normally waits until the coronial inquest is over, then initiates if they're going to a prosecution, which means you could be talking about four years before the whole episode is put to bed. And I think it goes a little bit back to the issue of the evidence being compelled to give the truthful evidence. You know, do people need a year or two to prepare to give that evidence? I think the fact that they seem to speaks a little bit to why they're taking that time. And it must be self-interest, I think.
Mr. Simic, do you have any view about whether or not the delay is partly explained by, you know, those interests met, some of them no doubt legitimate, having that intensive approach to the hearing?
Yeah, absolutely. From my experience with construction fatalities, as I said, the process is a prosecutorial model, and the emphasis is all on damage control and pleading the matter out. Safe Work have got a two-year time limit. One would have thought the best way to find out what happened, what caused a death, is to get that evidence in before the coroner as quickly, as practically as possible. And we can do that with the coroner's court, because as you've heard before, the coroner is able to give protections to witnesses. And it's so important to get the, what I call the unfiltered evidence of witnesses before they've spoken to about 50 or 60 people, sometimes, you know, literally, you know, when you're talking, something gets strung out for two or three years. It certainly would be unacceptable in criminal prosecutions. And I don't understand why we sort of put up with it or accept it as a norm with a workplace death, which is just as serious as any other death on the road, man, you know, any other manslaughter. And I think it's just really important to get those witnesses to give their evidence as frankly as possible in an open court, so it can go down on transcript, on record, and people can make their findings from there on.
And whilst it's rich in their minds.
Whilst it's fresh in their minds. And can I say, it's also in the best interest of the poor workers who are there who witnessed it. They don't want this thing to go on and be strung out forever. They really, this is only having to do with evidence, but my experience is people just want to spill their guts and say what they've got to say and move on with their life. That's how they cope with the, you know, seeing a workmate die is, you know, it's all, anyway, you don't need an expert to tell you about that.
So. If we were to make recommendations for amendments to Coroners Act or a reformed Coroners Act, one of the core objectives should be as timely as possible, determination of coronial matters, and that should be one of the clear objectives.
Absolutely. Can I just strongly, strongly emphasise this? We do not have industrial manslaughter laws in New South Wales, but people are incarcerated, right? Most people that can give helpful evidence are not going to be in the gun, you know? They're not going to be in the gun, they're not going to be, they're not at risk of being prosecuted. They do honestly want to just be able to tell whatever they've got to tell and deal with the process as quickly as possible. They don't want to be strung out waiting for years and having to see numerous investigators, numerous in-law lawyers, et cetera, et cetera. That's my humble opinion.
Well, we may not have, we may not have those laws, but we, I guess a number of the witnesses may be managers or directors of companies that have got financial interests at stake, so that might, and that might be a factor. Mr. Shubridges?
You know, I might just add something to Mr. Simic's comment. Putting a recommendation regarding the timelines for the determination might also, through the back door, force better resourcing so that the various government organisations can meet those deadlines. In other words, force the issue, force the financing of it. In other words, force the issue, force the financing of it.
Can I ask the witnesses this question? Is there a sort of a consensus, at least amongst you, that having the coronial first, with all of the sort of extra powers, the ability to direct the giving of evidence, the protection through certificates and what have you, to try and find, you know, the truth is the best, it's best to have that done first so that if there are then civil actions or criminal actions, obviously, it's a matter for people then to find admissible evidence in a court. But at least if the truth or the facts are established for the benefit of the victims and their families, that's, that would be in the public interest?
Absolutely. And if you think of the construction industry and, you know, yes, there's an organised sites where it's very clear who the principal contractor might be, who the subcontractor might be, who an employee might be, who a sub-subcontractor might be. But there are many deaths that happen in this workplace where it's entirely unclear who is in control of a site, who the person who's been killed is employed or engaged by and what circumstances. And of course, those investigations at that instant, when you've got people available. And the other thing is people in our industry come and go. I mean, we have a highly itinerant workforce, you have a high rate of non-citizen, non-permanent resident people working in this industry, they don't hang around for very long. So you really want to have a system that can pull all that information together very quickly and upfront so that it is very clear then, you know, what might be available to the regulator, what might be available to the family of a loved one lost, what then might be available in terms to the unions, to make submissions to government and industry about how these things could be addressed in the future to, you know, repeat the, to prevent the repeat of the fatality. So very important, I think, that that happens upfront and done well.
And if it was done well and done early, a lot of those basic queries, for example, who's in charge of a workplace or indeed whether anyone was in charge of a workplace, might actually then be able to inform other processes. But it's a bit hard to do that if you don't have the basic facts.
I strongly agree with the proposition put there, Mr. Searle. Get the evidence out first and all these other processes can work their way through the system, whether they be civil or prosecutorial. The whole object of the coroner's court is to actually probably get the best evidence about what caused a death. That's why it's been the coroner's role.
And to identify systemic issues, hopefully.
Yes, sorry, correct.
No, no, I mean, that is something that the coroners can do, but we've received some evidence that, again, the practice of coroners is inconsistent about whether they take a limited view about manner and cause of death or identifying and elucidating the systemic context, I guess. Committee members, are there any final questions, noting?